Okay. All right, we'll call this council meeting of May 11 to order. I'd like to acknowledge that we are holding the meeting on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. And let's stand for the singing of Oh, Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons' command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Record of attendance. Yes, whoever was singing is welcome to come back to all of our meetings. Sounded lovely. Record of attendance, and there's no absent with regrets. We're good declarations of conflict of interest. Anyone can declare at the time of the agenda item. Approval of agenda additions or deletions. And I believe we had one addition, which is a tender result for the Haley Road Phase Eight. Are there any other additions, any deletions?
Your worship.
Go ahead.
I'd like to withdraw 11H from the agenda this evening.
Remove 11H?
Remove 11H, please.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, anyone?
I'll move that we pass this or approve it as presented with the amendments.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, approval of minutes. Town Council, April 13, 2023. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Committee of the Whole, April 20. Thank you. Seconded, moved and seconded, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Special Town Council, May 9. Okay.
I'll second.
You're gonna move and second it?
No.
No.
I'll second.
Say whatever you want to do. Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. We don't have a public hearing, we don't have business arising, so new business. Okay, 11A, Citizen Advisory Committee's policy. The recommended motion there is that council amend the Citizen Advisory Committee's policy to allow citizens whose ordinary residence is outside the town of Yarmouth to sit on a committee.
So moved.
So moved. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Go ahead, councillor.
Okay, I'm certainly in favor of this amendment to this policy. So I just want to clarify, is there a limit to the number of citizens from outside of the town that can sit on a committee? Or does it just allow decision from the committee?
This is broad authority for council to make that determination based on applicants. So you may, depending on the committee and the applicants, choose to appoint whatever number you feel meets your requirements.
Okay. So I guess, looking at 7.4 of that policy, under Communities in Bloom, there was a change made to the policy, I think about a year and a half ago, to allow 20% of the members to be from outside of the town. And so I just, I don't know if this is the time to take out that 20%, because the policy will now allow us to make our own decision within the committee.
So can we make that amendment at the same time?
Okay, so I'd like to make the motion to amend 7.4 of this policy to have it removed.
Okay, so. All right, moved and seconded. So we are going, did you two want to speak to that one? Because we can vote on the amendment and then come back to you unless you want to address that one.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make that fair so that we.
Absolutely. So the motion is to remove 7.4. Okay, all, can I have a motion?
It was moved.
Oh, moved and seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, and then, was there anything else councillor? You're good, thank you. Councillor Cleveland.
Okay, thank you, your worship. I just wanted to speak to this because to me, these kind of things that we have been doing over the last while have been very exciting to me because we've worked, you know that we work a lot within these different committees. These committees kind of help run the town in a very meaningful way with volunteers who offer their opinions. And every committee, not every committee, but most of the committees that I've worked with have been kind of moving away from the model that we had before in which, you know, because this guy's from Yarmouth and he's great, and because this guy's from Argyle, he doesn't qualify, or whatever, into a matrix system where the people who are giving advice to council actually have some knowledge of whatever it may be that's going on. And so this is, I'm supporting this, if I could vote twice, I would. It's just one of those things that I think is very important and very progressive, and I'm very excited to see it happening.
Thank you. Deputy.
I agree with councillor Cleveland 100%. I think a lot of us at this table, when we think of things, we think of them regionally. So, you know, it's not just what's best for the town, it's what's best for our whole area. And if there's someone that lives outside of town limits that'll make one of our committees better, I think it's good that we make sure that they're included. So obviously, always looking out for the citizens of Yarmouth and the town, but as a whole, I think this is a great move forward and something we should be doing.
Thank you. Councillor Lesser.
Yeah, I just wanted to say at the Tuesday night accessibility committee, we just brought in a new member from Pumniko, and it was so nice to see an Acadian involved as well. And as I looked around, it was a virtual meeting, so as I looked around the screen, I realized there's very few from town on that committee, and the work that's being done there by the volunteers is outstanding, but they all use the town where accessibility needs to happen for them. So it's the skill set and the knowledge they have and lived experience that I think matters much more than where they actually live, so I'll be supporting it.
I just can't say enough that I'm glad we're finally removing this barrier. Been a long time coming.
I agree with everybody.
Yeah, if this thing fails, it's really crazy, isn't it?
We're gonna be in trouble. It's, this is, just by virtue of who we are, we're the economic center, this is everybody's town. And if you ask anybody from, you know, this whole region, what's your town, regardless of where they live, they're going to say Yarmouth. Because this is where, you know, most of them work and play, recreation, shop, all those things. So we certainly, you know, to councillor Cleveland's point, the whole matrix base, we want to make sure we cover all our bases. And we know the talent is widespread, and I'm still a big believer that there are very few people that recognize when they've crossed over the municipal boundaries. So this is a, this is a good thing. Anyone else? Go ahead councillor.
Okay, thank you. I just had one other question, and it's not in regards to the motion that's on the floor, but it is in regards to this policy. And that is 8.0 provisions regarding the Yarmouth Compost Facility Community Liaison Advisory Committee. And so I guess my question is, is does that committee still exist? And if it should be removed from the policy, or is it, because we, as I read it, we don't have anybody on that committee, and I just wondered about it.
So that one, we didn't appoint folks to that committee. It hasn't been an active committee for many years. I would hesitate to remove it from our policy for regulatory reasons. So it can remain on the books, but there's no reason to appoint people to a committee that doesn't have work to do.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. 11B Tender Results Granular Materials 2023 Season, and the recommended motion there is that council award the tender for granular materials for the 2023 season to Quality Concrete Inc., dependent on meeting specifications. Councillor Lesser?
I'll make that motion first.
Okay, moved. Have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded, okay.
Just a question, I guess, maybe for the CAO. Has the amount listed, like for type 1 gravel, 1,500 tonnes, and the price? Is that, if we require more, is the price stay the same?
Yes, it does. Those are estimated quantities that we typically need. So we ask the bid based on an expectation, but it's not a commitment that we will buy exactly that much.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. 11C Tender Results, the recommended motion there is that council award the tender for patching and paving for the 2023 season to Aberdeen Paving Limited. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. 11D Tender Results, recommended motion is that council award the tender for sidewalk and curb program for the 2023 season to Dees Decorative Concrete.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Second by councillor Heather. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, deputy.
Not so much discussion, I guess, but more just a point. If you notice in all these tender results, how much things have, prices have went up. So, you know, that takes effect in our overall budget and whatnot when we're trying to do things, and, you know, we have to take from one to give to the other. So, you know, you can see in every tender result here, everything's went up a bit. So the, you know, the bottom line at the end of the day is going up, and that's just more money we have to spend. So just heads up for those watching that, you know, we do what we can, but prices are what they are.
That's why we keep giving money to our parks team, so they can keep doing the money trees for us. Wouldn't that be nice? Okay, so any discussion on this one? Go ahead there councillor Lesser.
I'm just looking to see, I don't actually see it here, but all of our sidewalks moving forward will have the plate at the end of, at the end of the sidewalk, the tactile plate, I think it's called.
Oh, yeah, the feel, yeah.
I don't know if it's, I can't see it, maybe it's listed or something else, but.
Yes, thank you. We see that in there, CAO, or you're looking?
And that may be something, I don't know, that's something that the town comes and puts in itself, because it's, but I don't.
I can't answer that, but I can ask a question.
Okay, so, all right, so we're gonna ask that. Question, yeah. Okay, anything further on this one? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. CAO, do you need a motion to look into that? Okay, thank you. Okay, 11E, May Committee of the Whole Date Change. So Committee of the, we have FCM that week, so we're gonna change it. The recommended motion is that council changes the date of the May Committee of the Whole from May 25 to May 23.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, moved. Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And the June Town Council date has a change. Change, the recommended motion is that council changes the date of the June Town Council meeting from June 8 to June 15.
I'll make that motion too.
Okay, moved, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
My vote, but, can we make sure that we post that? Not that there's a ton of people that watch council meetings, but for those that do want to come to them or watch them, just to make sure that.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's automatically done anyway, but.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, did we vote? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Okay. Tax Grants, so this is just the tax portion. Recommended motion is that council confirm the tax grant amounts for 2023 and 2024 as presented. Okay, councillor Bowdoin, second by deputy. Any discussion on this? So that goes out probably as soon as we do this, start doing checks and, yeah.
Yeah, so that they'll, we'll look after that before tax bills are due and start attracting interest.
Okay, good, thank you. Deputy might have to sign checks this week. Okay, all those in favor? Go, sorry, go ahead there.
I just have a question. I remember filling out my tax grant amounts, we all do that, but do we have a final numbers yet? I haven't seen them. Okay, for some reason, my screen is frozen. Thank you.
Did you want to see my, or Steve's?
No, it's okay.
You're good? Okay, all right, I have to be vote. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, Employee Group, no, Compact Municipal Tractor. Recommended motion is that council approve the purchase of a 2023 Steiner 450 tractor from Title Tractor for $41,080.30. Is that plus tax? Tax included as recommended by the manager of Public Works. Okay, so moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead.
Just for the public's information, that's the sidewalk plow and does landscaping in the summer months, and it looks like a good price.
Okay, good. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. All right, request to present. This is a pretty cool one. The recommended motion is that council have a presentation on a new interactive accessibility map developed by Yarmouth Consolidated High School students Ryan Montalvo and Charlie McLaughlin as part of the co-op project with the planning department. Moved and seconded. Discussion on this one? Go ahead, deputy mayor.
I'd just like to say that this probably won't be the only presentation we get from students. The TAP program at Yarmouth High is working on some various projects around, and there is a group that also has an interactive map that highlights all the garbage cans available around in the town. So sometimes if there's a highly littered area, we may think that a garbage can needs to go there. And there's also another group of students who came up with like interactive posters or whatnot to encourage people where to put their garbage and whatnot. So just great to see our youth getting involved, and I'm lucky enough sometimes to sit in on these presentations before they come, but some very enthusiastic kids who are doing some great work. So thank you to them for the work they're doing, and really happy to see our youth being involved.
Excellent.
So we had the opportunity to see the final product, well, the, I guess, close to final product on Tuesday, and they are doing an incredible job. And I wanted to thank Natalie Smith as well for hosting these students. It's hard sometimes in a small community to find enough co-op placements where students enter co-op and TAP, and it looks like this was a really successful one. I think they were looking for, and I shouldn't, I don't know how long I should say this for, but they were looking for feedback if there were any mistakes on it, or anything that people noticed. But I did see somewhere that the deadline was, I think, like May 9 maybe? But I still think if there are updates, I think it's worth passing along to us, and we'll make sure that that does get updated.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
Okay, one final thing I wanted to say, when it comes to the TAP program itself, we've been, we've been hearing about and being presented to by the TAP program ever since this all started up a few years back. There are a very special group of students who have been, over the last few years, going through school, learning specifically about innovation, they've been working with IBM. We've had many of them come through Ignite. Some of them are, have been interned at IBM over the last few years, they will be again this year. This is the final year for TAP. TAP will be over. This whole cohort started in, I believe, grade nine and went through the entire course of school and are graduating this year. And there won't be, unfortunately, another cohort, which is another issue in and of itself, but it's really sad. But I would like to take a moment, just for the, I guess, the public's sake, to congratulate these kids who have done a remarkable job. And it has proven, when you give students access to something, especially in a rural area like in Yarmouth and through this area, access to something that they wouldn't have normally, some really special things can come of it. So congratulations to the TAP students who will be graduating very, very soon.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? All right, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we have council advisory committees, and that's the deputy mayor. I'm just going to, I'm gonna qualify what he's going to do with these words, because we understand that some of our meetings are pretty short, namely our council meetings, and there's a reason for that. So what the deputy mayor goes through are the Committee of the Whole recommendations. At, once a month, council gets together, we have a Committee of the Whole meeting, it's the same council team. It's usually a pretty long meeting, it's where we discuss everything, we dig into it, we ask for extra information, we have presentations, we do all of those things, and I'm going to, on top of that, say this and embarrass everybody at the table. The reasons the council meetings are short is because nobody at this table comes unprepared. I get calls during the week saying, you know, what did you think of that? Or, you know, Lynn, I know that Ms. McKinnon gets those questions too, where do I find extra information? So I just, I thought it was really important to maybe share that, because we have, I think, some of us at this table have had folks say, your council meetings are so short. And I assure everybody that it's not because the work isn't being done, it's being done so well that we don't have to sit here for hours and discuss things that we've already discussed and already done our homework on. So I'll say, I just want, I guess I just wanted to share that. It's just really great to be part of a team that does that, and I would say this too, because we, we just kind of chat as we're coming in and out. But I won't ask you to put your hand up, anybody at this table, if you've had a month where you can't find 10 extra minutes to. Right? And it's true, it's the reports, it's the meetings that we go to, it's the traveling, it's pulling things together, it's chairing committees. And what a council member does starts early in the morning, and it doesn't end till late, late at night. And that's not me patting everybody on the back, it's trying to help, you know, some folks understand that the work gets done effectively, and I just want to thank you all for that. So what the deputy mayor is going to read will take about one minute, and it took about 100 hours to get there. It's all yours, deputy.
I know about one minute when you look at number five, but anyways.
Okay, we'll give you two minutes.
A recommended motion that council approved the strategic priorities chart with the updated changes.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? That was a whole two-day session on, you know, how do we get to our priorities? So, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council amend the council committee meeting's agenda policy and include the amendment of no additions at town council meetings.
Okay, moved. Want to second it? Yep, go ahead.
Just for clarification, so we're not suggesting that the amendment would be, that we can't have any additions, we're amending it so that there can be additions, right? It's just the way it was worded.
No, I think you were right the first time.
So no additions at, on the agenda?
Yeah, at town council meeting, so.
Tuesday, Friday.
You want to be, you can say diplomatically why, I won't be so diplomatic.
So, so the policy intention here is that you won't show up for a council meeting, as you are tonight, and you'll be presented with an agenda item that nobody has had prior warning and opportunity to prepare for. So additions to council agenda can come up until Tuesday afternoon, and they'll be reissued with the agenda. Committee of the Whole is different, as are all advisory committees, because no decisions are made there, it's all recommendations to come forward to council. So you can come to a committee of the whole and ask your colleagues to consider something without prior warning, they don't have to make a recommendation or a decision, but if they do make a recommendation and later find additional information, they have those two weeks between committee of the whole and council to change their mind.
Okay, so that is what I believed, and that is, and I agree with the intent.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified, that's all. Thank you.
And the other part between the committee of the whole, the reason we do committee of the whole, is that it's a second sober thought, Jeff would say that, that second sober thought. So we have two weeks to get more information, you know, discuss what we need to discuss, and certainly change your mind when you find out something different. So it's a, it's a safety measure that I think should be written into the MGA, but there you go. Okay, so moved and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Go ahead, deputy.
Recommended motion that council amend the Central District Improvement Plan bylaw.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council direct staff for more information regarding the veterinarian shortage.
Seconded, any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Big breath for this one. Whereas the government of Canada has made the decision in the budget 2023 to make municipalities responsible for all retroactive costs stemming from the latest RCMP collective bargaining agreement, and whereas the extraordinary one-time costs, which in some jurisdictions amount to millions of dollars, will cause significant hardship for communities and residents across the country, and were negotiated without meaningful consultation or a seat at the table for municipalities responsible for paying the bill. And whereas municipal governments are already paying a growing share of policing costs, but unlike, but unlike the other orders of the government, cannot run deficits to spread out the impact of these extraordinary one-time sums and have limited revenue tools. And whereas local governments will now be forced to make difficult decisions that will impact residents, such as cutting essential services, reducing policy levels, raising property taxes significantly, and/or canceling work or local infrastructure at a time when Canadians' concerns about community safety and cost of living are already rising. And whereas going forward, it is critical that municipalities be proactively engaged in the forthcoming processes related to contract policing to prevent this occurring again, therefore it be resolved that the town of Yarmouth joins the Federation of Canadian municipalities in calling for the federal government to commit to ensuring that local governments are meaningfully consulted, fully informed, and at the table on issues related to policing costs, given the municipal role in keeping our community safe. And further it be resolved that the town of Yarmouth conveys this support in writing local members of parliament.
Moved and seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one? Go ahead, councillor.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, Jeff, if you can just speak to this, just kind of to the public as to what the impact this might have on the town and the upcoming tax discussions that we'll be having, because I'm sure it will impact that.
Yes, so off the top of my head, I believe the, the amount that is payable from the Town of Yarmouth is in the area, correct me if I'm wrong, Lindsey, $516,000? Sixteen? $516,000. So on a $18 million operating budget, that is a significant one-time cost. We do have the opportunity, and we have taken that opportunity, to pay that to the federal government in two payments over two fiscal years. So that will ease the pain somewhat, but we continue to be in, in lockstep with NSFM and FCM asking for federal assistance and relief because the federal government undertook the negotiations on their, on their own with the RCMP. The provincial association, your provincial association was not involved or informed, and your administration, nor yourselves, were involved or informed. And so it was difficult to plan for what this might look like. I mean, nearly impossible. So we were hopeful that there would be some financial assistance. In other words, they would provide some money to help offset this. They, they have not. They refuse that. So the best they've offered is, is to spread the payments over, over two fiscal periods. And as I say, that would be, we'd be foolish not to take that opportunity, and so, so we've confirmed that. As far as the impact on the operating budget, next week, we have our first, our first peek at the binders and, and what that, what that looks like. There were a lot of things that, that came forward from the directors and from the corporations and that, that we support, like Mariner Center and Waste Check and so on, to varying degrees. And you're not going to be able to satisfy all of those wishes or desires, but that's not unusual. That's the case every year. So we're hopeful, and we'll start the process on, on, I believe, Tuesday. And you can, you can sort of judge for yourself if we're, if we're on the right lines in terms of the operating budget.
Good. Okay.
And I guess just before the vote, just so people know, that is also policing is our biggest expenditure, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's probably our biggest expenditure. I'm just thinking where the major areas are. If it isn't the biggest, it is, it is right next to it. And so our contract, just, I'll speak to that for a second. So we pay 70, 70% of the policing costs. So our RCMP detachment, you know, we've, we've got great service. This is not about the service in any way, but we have great service, and they, we pay 70%, the other 30%, my understanding, comes from the province. So they have responsibilities that go beyond our town needs, and that 30% is a recognition of that, that, that they do have other policing duties that, that simply aren't municipal policing.
Any more questions? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council appoint Phil LeBlanc, Tim Kaiser, Catherine Davison, JP Farin, Gordon Watkins, and Patty Durkey to the Waterfront Advisory Committee.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council approve the request by the Goff and Curling Center for wayfinding signage to be located on town land at PID 902-72980.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion on this one?
Your worship.
Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, signage can sometimes be a touchy issue around here, so just so everyone understands, that PID is actually what appears to be the driveway into the Goff and Curling Center to, to the average person. That is their driveway, but it's actually a piece of town land that extends straight in as a street right-of-way. So all we're doing is allowing them to put a sign where everyone would expect it to be, at the, at the entrance.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council refer the accessible parking spot request at six, or at 369 Main Street to the traffic authority.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
And a recommended motion that council send a letter to NSFM requesting they consider partnering with other levels of government to ensure the recommendations from the Mass Casualty Report are implemented.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Go ahead, councillor Bell, you wanted to...
Thank you, your worship. So following the NSFM Spring Conference that was held last week, and the identification in this, in September of, of the NSFM moving from a resolution-based organization to an organization that works on policy items through a committee process, I'd like to perhaps amend the motion to say that the count, that council send a letter to NSFM encouraging them to consider working with other levels of government in addressing the Mass Casualty Commission report, and to add the, the report to its Public Safety Committee when it is established. So I'd like to make that amendment.
Yeah. Okay, you're good. All right, so that is the motion now. Thank you. So it's still moved and seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Okay, citizen advisory committees, and that's councillor Cleveland, and the same thing stands as what I said. It's a lot of long meetings.
Yeah, this is planning advisory, and there are two here that we have discussed and passed at our planning advisory committee. So we move on with the recommended motion for the first one, that council approve first reading to amend the MPS, the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to allow short-term rental accommodations within residential dwellings.
Okay. Moved, seconded, discussion. So just so we know, this doesn't, just go ahead. Doesn't change anything.
Yeah, so, your worship, I, I had a conversation with our contract planner earlier today, and in fact, she's recommended a one small change, and I think at first reading is the time to introduce this, rather than wait till a public hearing, and then you've got to potentially do the process over again. So it is within the definition of the short-term rental. So on page 79 of your council package, there's a definition for short-term rental. And the amendment should read means, short-term rental means a dwelling unit offered as overnight accommodation to the traveling public for a rental period of less than 28 consecutive days, and this definition excludes guest home or bed and breakfast. It's a very small nuance in, in the wording, but it makes it more consistent with the TARA Act, the Tourist Accommodation Registration Act, and I think that's important.
Okay. So was the, did we make the motion?
Motion's been made.
Okay, so we're gonna, you're gonna move the amendment? You're gonna second it? Okay? So all in favor of the amendment, of the amended?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. And then the whole one, okay? The original with the amendment, okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay? And then we have a public hearing. When is that?
Now that you've rescheduled the June council meeting, so that will be June 15th.
Okay.
All right. Next up, recommended motion that council approve first reading to amend the Land Use Bylaw to include micro-distillery, micro-brewery, micro-wineries, and similar craft beverage production as permitted usage in the general commercial C2 zone. That's on Stars Road.
Yeah. Okay. Now the seconder? Okay, moved and seconded. I think we, we had the bit of a conversation there. The only reason we need to do this is because, really, micro-brewery wasn't a word when we wrote the original. So just being able to add some of the words makes a difference. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried.
Thank you, your worship. That's what I have.
Thank you. Okay. Deputy Mayor, you're on for the Lake George watershed.
Recommended motion that council direct staff to contact the Department of Environment and Climate Change to inform them that the exploratory process can start.
Seconded by councillor Heather.
Your worship.
Go ahead, CAO.
It may not be clear by exactly the wording of that motion, but it is to, to explore, designate some of our lands within the watershed as protected wilderness area.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, it was seconded. You know, in, in other, you know this anyway, but in other places, everything's just locked off. You can't even get close to a watershed. You know, there's, there's roadways that go in, there's, there's gates. It's, it's our water source. It's, I guess it just strikes me as a little bit weird that you have to kind of say that, but, yeah. Okay? Sorry, I just had to...
There's no Plan B.
No, there's no Plan B. Exactly. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried.
Recommended motion that council send a letter to the Minister of Environment requesting that the crown land within the Lake George watershed be designated as a protected wilderness area.
Seconded. Go ahead.
So we had a meeting on Monday night of the watershed, and we're lucky to have the citizens on there that we do, Mr. Allen, Mr. Briggio, and others that come, bring a wealth of knowledge from just living around that area and actually know what's going on. So basically, this just furthers our protection of our, our watershed if we can, and just happy to have those citizens on there that can also add and, and speak to things from a, a lived experience that allows us to make these informed decisions.
Excellent. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind adding to that as, as, you know, we've invested, and we continue to invest in Southwest Shore, Southwest Biosphere Association, and Dave Solos does, does a lot of, gives a lot of volunteer time to that and is a resource to the town. And he and his staff at the Biosphere have, have done a lot of work on this for us, on our behalf. And so, you know, we're very fortunate to have committed volunteers and to have that UNESCO Biosphere in our, in our area. It's a, it's a real asset.
Sure is. Okay. Any more discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, deputy. Reports for information, mayor's report, questions for committee chairs? Any questions for committee chairs? Go ahead, councillor Dairs.
It's not a question, just a very quick report regards to the deer management strategy group. Had a lengthy discussion today with the wildlife biologists with the Department of Natural Resources and Renewables. One of the difficulties we're having is trying to develop a strategy for getting an accurate count, or a semi-accurate count, of the number of deer in the urban population. So we've asked for their assistance in developing that strategy, and I'm happy to say they're, they're coming up with, with something that will satisfy their requirements as far as the data they require. We've also discussed a method of getting more public input and allowing the public to, to get in more information. So I think we will, we will land on, on whether it be a public meeting or whether it be an information booth where we discuss it one-on-one, but we're working towards that as well. So there'll be lots more coming out in the near future. May is not a good month to be trying to do a deer count because it's the time of year when the fawns are being born, and so people may notice that they're not seeing as many deer out in, out and about right now, so it may be later on in the summer before we get to it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for that. Anyone else? Good? Okay, we've got an addition here, and the recommended motion is that council award the Haley Road Phase 8 to Aberdeen paving in the amount of $342,213.55 plus HST. Okay. Seconded by councillor Heather, seconded by councillor Cleveland. Go ahead.
Perhaps we could get a, an explanation of that, CEO?
Explanation of what Phase 8 is?
Yeah, for, for the public.
Okay, so council's well aware, we've, we've done active transportation trails across Haley Road from Argyle to Stars Road. This is making one of the connections, sorry, I should say, we've also done a trail that's made a connection on Forest Street to go from, from Haley down to the sidewalk that connects just below the, the high school. So there's another connection that's missing, there's another gap, and that's on Parade Street. So between the, the active transportation trail and Jody Shelley Drive, there's no sidewalk on either side of the street. And so this project will fill that gap with an active transportation trail on the north side of the street.
Awesome. Okay.
Is there more?
No. No, although... I could say, and I've said, I said it to him actually this, today, and I've said it more than once anyway, but I have to say, of, of all the things we've done, we've done many things sitting around this council table, but the active living trails are something really special to my heart. I, I spend a lot of time on them, and there's a community there. It's funny, I, I spend a lot of time in the mornings running them, and in the evening, usually walking with my wife, and you meet people on them, and you have conversations with people there, not usually when you're running, but in the evening part. And there are a lot of people who are using those trails. There are kids who are using those trails regularly. Not only are they safe, they have done what they were intended, and maybe a little bit more, because they're creating their own opportunities for community to come together. It's wonderful.
Yeah, they're, they're great. The accessibility piece too, right? The, go ahead councillor Lesser.
I'm certainly not running those, but I've been walking them some.
I drive them.
Drive.
I drive by and wave.
Oh, I thought you meant we drove on them.
No, everybody has to do their part.
And we've said it before, but just to bring it up again, this isn't, this isn't deciding to do trails as opposed to paving streets. There's funding that's come from, what actually says here, ICIP multi-use trail funding. So if we don't get that funding, some other place is going to get the funding, so we're lucky we have a staff that work hard to secure that money, but it's not taking away from paving streets, because that is something that sometimes gets said when they see sidewalks going in that look like a street and there's potholes in the street. So that's, it's good for people to know that it's not taking away from that money.
Thank you. Go ahead, deputy.
To further councillor Lesser's point, those partnerships are very important. You know, to, for us to spend 30 cents and get a dollar out of it, it, it makes our, our bottom line go that much farther. But the safety of it also for the students working at the high school before, you know, they're walking on the side of the road just to get, you know, to different stores and stuff around, and now the safety to be inside, off the road, kind of by the Wesleyan Church, and just, I guess, getting, giving a shameful shout-out to councillor Heather today. She was part of a group that helped clean up the stone wall that was around there, and as I was leaving the school, I got called in to be a photographer for a minute, but thank you for the extra work that was done in the cleanup around, because it does get quite dirty there, but it's, it's looking really well, so thank you.
Maybe those, maybe those high school students, when they put out the garbage can, this is where the garbage cans are, people will know, they can actually put their garbage in the garbage can, right? Their dogs', dog stuff too. It just blows my mind that people think it's okay to collect your dog's stuff in a bag and then throw it in someone's hedges. And that's all I'm going to say, because I'll say too much. And that volunteers have to go clean it up. Yeah, I just broke my own rule. Approval of invoices. Did we vote on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't think we moved it.
No, we moved it. I wouldn't let the discussion happen without moving it. Go ahead, CAO.
Your worship, I, I'll just take this opportunity for a second to say that, that a lot of that work that you were just talking about and, and enjoying, and enjoying your, in your walks and runs and drives, that part of it came about... in your walks and runs and drives, that part of it came about because there was a strategy, right? There was an active transportation strategy that, that a council approved in 2010, and that allowed staff to pursue the funding that we, that we eventually received. It makes it clear that this isn't a, a one-off, kind of off-the-cuff, just looking at, trying to grab money. We had a plan, and this is, this is part of executing that plan. So we've done a lot of work on that, it's been 13 years. Lindsey is working on a presentation for hopefully the community of the whole coming up, if we can have it ready. And that will give you all sort of an update on the, what the plan was, what we've achieved, we'll celebrate that, and we'll talk a little bit about next steps, so that, so the council's aware, and you can start to talk about it in, in the community. And again, we'll, we'll move forward as opportunity permits.
Great, thank you. Okay, do we vote? I get lost. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. Okay, approval of invoices, please, motion, councillor Bell, deputy mayor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, contrary, motion carried. I signed Water Checks too, just so you don't have to come in. And the date of next meeting is June 15th. Okay, do we have anything in camera, CAO?
Yes, I won't.
Okay, all right, motion to go in camera.
Some.
Okay, and thanks to the folks that came.